Call to order for the City of Cannon Falls Council Meeting Tuesday. Oh, this is, uh, is that the wrong date? Yeah, it's the right one. Got it. September 2nd, uh, 2025. Uh, if we could get a roll call, please.
Diane Johnson.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Chad Johnson.
Here.
Jefferson. Absen. Novak.
Here.
Tony Berger. Absen. Montgomery.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation, without doubt, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second from Lisa, second from Chris. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Passed. Public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. Public input will be no longer than thirty minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule a consideration of the item on a future agenda. Tonight, we got Jim Hoffman.
We're on. All yours, Jim. At the base. Green does agree. Vertical button. Right over there. There you go. Yeah. There you go.
All right. Like Matt said, Jim Hoffman, nine seventeen Park Street West. Good evening tonight. I'd like to speak about ordinance enforcement, yet again, specifically noise. It appears that on September thirteenth, there's going to be a monster truck mania event at the fairgrounds. In their advertisement, they warn that hearing protection is recommended. That in itself gives the local authorities the heads up that they need to enforce the local noise ordinance. In the, in the advertisement, it appears they will more likely exceed our local noise ordinance, not to mention state noise limit for a residential area. There should be ample time to prepare and get the necessary monitoring equipment in place, whether it be local equipment or equipment unload from the MPCA. Having noise monitoring equipment in place should allow the authorities to act accordingly on the day of the event. Every ordinance should be enforced in the fairness and safety of all. If you knew what time and date of an apparent driver was going to speed through downtown, all of the response would be this event on the thirteenth gives you insane advance rates, yet the noise, yet the noise ordinance appears as though it'll be ignored. Not doing anything, that's dereliction. Someone of authority should do something. Event itself is a slap in the face to the people on the left side. Hearing protection recommended? Come on. I don't believe the Fair Board truly needs any extracurricular, curricular events at all, ever. The Fair Board President stood here saying that they are, that they need these types of events to stay in operation. I personally don't believe that for a minute, and I don't need any evidence or proof to say, or say, to say that or believe that. The Fair Board certainly doesn't need any proof or evidence to proclaim that they're in rough shape. The Fair Board has not offered up or been asked by the city for any proof of their dire finances. They just say they're in tough shape, and everyone is supposed to take them at their word. I feel it's only right that the Fair Board and their largest contributor, the Friends of the Fair, show their books. I don't have anything against the fair or the way it's been run, you know, three or four days, or the Fourth of July. Full transparency here, I don't attend the fair. But I do, June, hell, it's seasonal. But I do drive by the fairgrounds, and it's very well kept. It appears to be doing just fine. Now, the city administrator, city attorney, the Fair Board attorney have entered into some type of negotiations. They apparently have given the Fair Board negotiating power they don't have. These, these negotiations are apparently taking place in hopes of moving on to another text amendment, vote, text amendment change for the fairgrounds. Why wasn't any citizen represented at all? It really affects them the most. Oh, and by the way, a tech, by the way, a text amendment for a zoning change was already voted down this year by the planning commission and the city council. This new amendment looks as though it's going to be zoned plain fair zone, and affairs and events will be handled by conditional use permits. To me, that's a bit like putting the fox in charge of the hen house. If we're, if we're not going to enforce ordinances here, why have they? Thinking and choosing what ordinance is to enforce isn't right either. How do you possibly tell someone that you can't do something and turn around and tell someone else that you can do whatever they want? I just don't want to be told that we just didn't see this coming for the thirteenth. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion resolution as council business. Tonight, item A, adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Item B, meeting minutes, August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, city council meeting. Item C, resolution two eight two five, receiving bids and awarding contracts to hardwood state's third subdivision. And item D, approved PUD agreement and development agreement for hardwood state, hardwood of the state's third subdivision. Is there anything the council would like to pull down as council business? Hearing done, I would take a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So.
Book from Diane, second from Lisa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That carries. Gets us to council business. Uh, tonight we have nursing home discussion. John.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I sent a message out, uh, earlier discussing potential options for the nursing home if we ever get to the position where it, we, the city has to instigate the building being, being torn up. So upon a conversation with the city attorney about that process, she confirmed that those are, they're accurate. That's the, the end result of, you know, what we would need to do. So if the, in the, in the interim, um, if we were able to engage with the property owner and come to some sort of discussion or understanding about the condition of the building and where they need to go, that's a, you know, kind of part of our ordinances as well, that we can, you know, work with them to try to get something done and establish a timeline in which it needs to be, uh, addressed, that, that would likely be probably the, the quickest, you know, least costly, um, experience or situation and process for, for the city to go through that might end up yielding a result that we want. So, um, I did receive today from, uh, the police chief, uh, the list kind of broken down. It's all, I mean, it had to, you know, had to separate out all the times we just do the, the building checks, like, because we have been doing that from, uh, for the last couple of years. But it seems that since the March of twenty-three, when the building was officially shut down, that we've had about sixty, um, engagements where we've actually physically either had to go into the building or respond to some, some complaint or issue that, that has happened. So it has been pretty frequent over that time. Back in January, we, uh, the city directed the, our building officials, uh, Gooding County to, um, look at the building and make a determination whether or not it could be, uh, it was safe to enter. They determined that it was indeed hazardous and it should be placared as such that warning many individuals that the building is hazardous and entering it is, is they're doing so at their own risk, even though it's not in safe condition. The reason, um, you know, since January to today, why we haven't been, you know, taking a more expedient action on this is that that property had a active purchase agreement on it between QuickTrip and the building owner. Um, since that time, uh, since a couple of weeks ago, uh, QuickTrip has no longer extended or continued the purchase agreement on the site, um, for the store building, um, that they're looking for within our community. So they are kind of moving on to trying to identify a different location. Um, so since that is no longer active and I don't have or have received or any indication of any, you know, media more, uh, prospects for redevelopment for that site, um, I do believe it is time for us to, to kind of start that action. So I've already placed one phone call and left a message for the building owner to, to respond to. Yeah, I haven't gotten a response back since last Wednesday. So I'm, um, still kind of waiting for, for that answer. If not, um, a certified letter will be sent to detail the, the direction that we want to go or making sure they're on notice of the condition of the building and that the city do, does intend to seek actions to, to have a contrast if they're not willing. So the point of tonight's meeting was hopefully, um, you know, get some input and, uh, from the council on, you know, how far potentially do you want to take this? Um, I kind of outlined those last four objects of, um, you know, the cost, the expense, the risk, uh, that might take. I don't think we need to, you know, take action on any one of those four things right now, but, um, certainly want to, to know that it's something to be done about the building and, and supporting councils, kind of, and see if there's actions.
Discussion and questions from council.
I know we talked before about it having asbestos, and then QuickTrip, they were going to do, they were going to apply for a grant for it. Would that still apply if we had to help tear it down or whoever tore it down?
Yep. So the grant that, the, the grant that we indicated that we would, um, you know, file in support, or actually the city has to apply for initially is through Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, DEE. And there's, uh, there's a scoring matrix for those applications, and they're generally competitive, but they have multiple rounds of, of fund, grant reviews. One's due in August, the other's due in February. Um, and they're generally funds in that every single, every single review period. Uh, I've applied for that in my past cities, and they generally score well if you have an end user that, you know, is identified in the way the property is going to be redeveloped. So you can have, um, QuickTrip, say first, you know, as an example, they're going to come in, the city can apply for that, use the funds to support QuickTrip and, and tearing the building down, offsetting some of that cost. Um, and then, um, we might, we score a lot better because QuickTrip's going to redevelop the new site. What we tried to apply for in my past on this was the city owning a structure had no idea who the end user was going to be because it was a, you know, facility that was, you know, in the middle of the block in downtown in a very old building. Um, so we were going to, needed to get it, we weren't going to tear it down, but we could also use the funds to clean it up. So we're going to do that to clean up the site, um, and then, you know, hopefully that makes it more attractive for an end user. Ultimately, we didn't score very well when we were to work for it. So if we can still, you know, make that effort, apply for it, but it works a lot better if we do have an end user identified. So if there's a, a means for that to be redeveloped for something, um, I think it's, we have a pretty strong chance of success of receiving those funds to help us. Um, they're not, they're not certainly going to cover the full extent of it, but it definitely would probably offset larger, you know, hazardous materials that, like asbestos. Um, I do not know of or have a report that indicates what's in there, but that would be one of the first things that would need to be done even in the instance of, you know, directing the, the current building owners.
I imagine QuickTrip crunched the numbers of how much we've got done to take care of all this. Do we have those numbers, like ballpark of an idea of what clearing the thing out would be?
No, I, there's, and theirs is different too. It's, it's, they're going to, they're going to take the site down and redevelop it to the, what they want to do for, and what they need. So they're going to, you know, probably have larger activation, uh, costs associated with the project to build the, the tanks for the fueling stations. They might have, you know, different levels of foundation that they need. You know, in our instance, of just mitigating hazardous structure, it's take it down to the, to the foundation and make sure there's no hazardous material left over and leave it as a brownfield for, for redevelopment. So, um, if, if we would want to, if that's the direction for the council, then, you know, that's using resources, uh, to, to generate that on a site that we don't own right now. So, um, certainly something that if we did get to the point where whatever best decision that we have available to us is, is there.
Yeah, I just look at it, they've had three years. They haven't done anything with it. They sat on it. They've done it for the issue. They're stopped rushing, they're getting cleaned up. It's a ISO to the community, and it's land that personally, if it was cleared, I think developers would rather bidding war for it. So we, we, the first offer was QuickTrip, but if it was cleared, I can see other things wanting to go there.
Yeah, and I would, I would totally agree with you that the site is definitely attractive for redevelopment and, and just again, state, you know, our conversation with QuickTrip was also contingent upon some conversations that we were having with Mindot, which, uh, took longer than any of us anticipated and ended up with, you know, lesser tea at the, at the endpoint than it did even when we first started talking to them. So, um, that, yeah, yes, it's been since March twenty twenty-three. I would, I would give them a break. I would give the owner a little bit of a break on, you know, maybe the past ten months because it was kind of known to, to them at that time that QuickTrip had purchase agreement. And we were, we were also in the process of conversations with Mindot, trying to figure the best way to redevelop that site for traffic purposes.
I'm not too concerned about their feelings. They put a nursing home rundown, and people had six hours notice and they relocated. So now the city's probably, they didn't do their job.
I'm not totally familiar if this owner was the owner of the nursing home at that time or if they. Yes, something.
Fair enough.
Is there anything, any one of those four options that's like a distinct disadvantage to the city? Or even more costly, I guess, to the city?
Um, certainly, uh, I think the most, absolutely the most costly is going to be eminent on the take. If we were, which is an option to the city, that if we did want to take it, the owner isn't willing to give it up, we could, you know, go through that route. That's, it's, you're going to end up with a lot more legal challenge to that, and as the owner's not going to want to give up those rights. You are going to pay market value for the property, so you're going to end up settling for some, some dollar amount to paying that person to take their property. And then we're owning it, we're totally on the hook and responsible for the condition of the property and tearing it down to whatever extent.
So what, what happens if we choose one of the options where we, we demo it or we tell them what we want, want fixed, and if they don't do it, I mean, or be on the hook?
What, I guess what I don't want to see happen is this person has sat on this property. Yes, they had a purchase agreement, but I don't want to do work for them and then them not pay us back or pay the bill or the assessment. What happens then? Yeah, so primarily, the, the main, and it's even in our ordinances to do this, the main, the main resource we have to, to recoup those costs is to assess the property owner. So if it stays in their ownership and we came in and mitigated the hazards and tearing the building down, um, we build that back to them and assess that onto their property taxes. That's at least the, the, the means in which we're going to get something that, um, it's, it can in some instances be risky that you're not going to get much back if the property owner has no resources at all and property has, has no value. In this case, in this instance, it does have value, so even if we came in, tore it down, assess it to that, the owner still has the property ultimately to post a tax forfeiture, there's going to be a, we can, we can work with the county to set the minimum bid price for a tax forfeiture auction, um, and we could set it to a dollar amount in which we want to say, hey, we want to get this much back at least out of this property. This is the first bid. We can't accept anything that goes ahead of it.
Also, usually, so like, the house doesn't usually, like, QuickTrip's assessment is not done, like, they go on to the next, they tell you like that?
Um, no, that was, that's worst case scenario, say they don't have any money. Better case scenario is the owner still has a property, it's, we've cleaned it up, now it's, you know, sellable again, and they sell the property while those assessments are on the taxes and those got to get paid some. There, there, that's a negotiation between, usually between buyers and sellers on who pays those assessments. They have to get paid. In, in the instance of a sale of a, of a property, somebody's going to assume paying that cost. So if it, you know, they sell it to the seller, seller says, yeah, I will assume assessments, they get paid. And they're not, uh, assessments, in this instance, statutory, statutory authority, you're not spreading those costs out for, you know, like a street assessments for fifteen years. There's a, there's a much shorter window of time to achieve any of those assessments on.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you have any indication if the property owner is willing to work with the city in terms of doing something to make the building less hazardous, or are they just kind of unresponsive? Or we don't know?
Um, I, see, I've, I've unfortunately not had any direct conversation. Jeff has probably had the most in terms of the city perspective.
So when we found new, um, issues, we have reached out. Typically, we don't hear anything back. It actually took action by this body to get them to board up the, the windows that were broken. Shortly after that, another one got broken. That one's still broken and not boarded up and has been notified by us a few times. So I would not put responsive in the category of this owner.
Was the owner responsive when there was the purchase agreement in place with QuickTrip?
No, my understanding is, is that he was supposed to keep it secure. Obviously, that was not him. So he wasn't even responsive to QuickTrip's offer of basically, you know, a lot of cash and then all of a day to do with the windows and windows.
I heard Shelley committed a lot of, are you responsible for it?
Yeah, I, there's, there's current, uh, water holes and things like that today third party.
I, if everything is turned off, we had issues last year, first with, uh, a wall, toilets or something that had been broken, shut off some of the lines, then we had sprinklers because there were apparently separate lines for that. So now I believe there's absolutely no water going into that facility.
But their current, uh, property taxes, are the best we know?
I don't know. Because I'm just looking right now.
You mean they?
Up until the beginning of twenty-five, I know they were current. I have now looked at twenty-five.
Because I keep thinking, if the water's shut off, the current, um, any outstanding bills related to property, but it's been an ongoing issue in terms of responsiveness to the.
Power is still on, so whether they're, they're paying the bills or not, we're not the utility, so I couldn't answer that question.
Oh. Do we, if, if we were going to go with the, uh, order remediation one first, which is, seems to be like the least costly to us, do we have an actual list of what we want them to do with the link to make it?
Yeah, we would need to probably do that, and, um, that's also hiring a structural engineer, somebody of, of that nature that can, you know, give us a professional opinion as to what it's going to take to keep that building secure. I mean, just boarding the windows and, and certainly hasn't proved to be enough. At times, um, it's mitigating it is a tougher task, I think, in this instance where you have so many, when we viewed it and I was in the building within that January timeframe, there's just so many access points, so many windows to these rooms with the, you know, three wings of the, of the building, lots of doors that, you know, can, sometimes don't want to open and other times are probably pretty easily to, to get in. Um, that's, it's going to be tough and that's going to be costly as well.
To, to really secure it, you would have to board over all the windows because even just screwing it up shut, they're still breaking. Um, and then you get to the, the doors, which, you know, as I started to alluded to, some of them function on magnetic security. As long as there's juice, they work. But when the juice gets turned off, they won't work. And so they're going to need to be secured in a manner that isn't easily defeated, whether it's from the inside, and there's one access point that still functions. But regardless, it's going to be quite a project. And I, yeah, see, there's at least a, I know there's at least one roof hatch, maybe multiple mine. Some parts of that roof are very, very structurally questionable.
Yeah, that's why they got shut down, I believe, because their roof turns on for six months of the year.
To answer the, the taxes question, they are, they have been paid. First half tax payment was paid this year.
John, if you had to, to guess the timeline of the best case scenario versus the worst case scenario, what do you think?
I'd say a best case, if we get compliance and action from the property owner, we could probably have the building secured in a few months, maybe up to six months. If we don't get any action on it, I think in terms of what we have to take for, for action directed from the council to getting the court orders, minimum, minimum of that is probably in the six to nine month range, depending on which level you have we're talking up to here. I had one instance where we had multiple court orders over the course of four years, but getting the initial one was the most difficult. Took about nine months from kind of the first point of contact before we end up getting a court order where we actually city staff and paid, you know, services to, to go and make it compliant with the property. And that was only XJ. That wasn't anything else.
I mean, I, I really like that option consent to, to demolition, where they let us demolish and we.
Yeah.
Put it back on their taxes for, for example, over five years. Because number one, for them would make the property more soundable. For us, it would eliminate an ISO and an hassle and once a bunch of time, put our police force.
And I don't want to completely say that the building is not safe. Well, I mean, there's probably plenty of parts of it that could be redeveloped or used. I think, just based on my site visit and then the opinion of the inspectors when I went in, that that's probably any is close to the same price as demo rebuild, especially when you have a, you know, grants offsetting some of the mitigation costs. I, I think the, for me, like, just knowing, hey, the, the city's willing to, to work with you so long as we're committed to paying for our costs in this is kind of the best way to kind of keep the process moving, um, and, you know, trying to get to a point of action. If it's, oh, the city is just, you have to do this and this is the timeline in which you're going to do it and you don't expect any help from the city, just get it done. And if you don't, we're going to go, you know, start taking action through legal recourse. Yeah, if they're not really willing to do much, which has kind of been part of the case right now, they're pretty absentee to the property, um, I think we're going to, we're going to struggle to, to get that, to get through without offering something, you know, to get it done faster. Not saying we're offering anything to, that we're going a hundred percent paid for it. I don't, I would not advise that. I've been through a different city that did that in the previous, before I got there in a couple of instances, kind of failing out property owners or letting the buildings go. We don't want to, I wouldn't advise that at all. Definitely would say, hey, if you can, if you're willing to work with us and willing to take on the costs when it's done, I think we can get something to happen.
So what can we do, like send them a thirty day letter, we want to work with you, get back to us? Because obviously, they're not talking, was that a thirty days, sixty days? Yeah, plenty of time.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Tell us if you want to do something.
The, shorten up the response time and making sure that something's done and then, you know, if it's not, then we're, we're starting to take those next steps to action.
I would recommend something to that effect. Shelley would best advise us on what those timelines should be, but my place to consult would be do not let this look like cracks. That problem is not going away. We end up with another building like we have across the, the rear of tracks if we don't stay in it.
It's at the beginning, um, obviously the first agreement with QuickTrip has fallen through. Do you feel that if we are quick in reacting to try to, uh, demolish the building and move on, would that be incentivize QuickTrip to come back to the location again? Are they already moving on to look elsewhere? I'm just saying, does this incentivize us to be more aggressive? Obviously, we're going to do something, but how aggressive?
I don't have any official, uh, positions from, from QuickTrip in that regard. I think there's, if I can just interpret based on, you know, I wasn't part of the original conversations with it, but just seeing how the process played out and what was explained to me at the end was just the costs associated with, with carrying it, you know, carrying on this process and not having any sort of timeline in which the store's going to get built, that was, that was, it could probably bought the building and, and sat on it, but they don't want to, you know, they want to have something up and running in a certain period of time. So if they're going to make a massive multi-million dollar investment, they want to start getting, getting that to the point of, um, where they. where they can generate revenue off of that site as soon as they can. So if it's, if that site is coming to them, if they're able to access that property at little cost, maybe they could build onto it for a hundred while we work through our situation with MidDOT. But as, they're, we're pretty, I'm pretty clear in understanding, Bill, you can confirm or deny this or correct me, but I think the earliest we see any action with, correct, you know, a major improvement of that intersection with MidDOT is 2029. Because it's not in their current plans. They don't have resources until that year that they can even allocate budget to a project like this. And, you know, that or we'd secure, we'd have to secure funding through some other means for them to do it.
Can I, can I ask a question about MidDOT? So if, if that was a blank slate right there and somebody else had found another QuickTrip, do they still have to do their traffic studies and stuff like that to prove Dow Street to, you know, still function, I guess? Or if they want to close off that access or whatever?
Yes.
Yeah?
Even if we were just to put a house back there?
Basically, yes, houses would be an issue because the traffic would be minimal. But anything that goes in there, we're going to be going back to that.
Yeah, it was, I think we asked, I asked the question, anything that is, if anything were to increase traffic flow from Highway 19 onto Dow or Dow onto Highway 19. If that were to increase the amount of traffic on anything developed on that site, would there, would something have to be done? And the answer was yes, something would have to be done. And that would either be, the cheaper options are median enclosure of Dow or a bigger, you know, more expensive is a roundabout. Multiple legs could come up for that site to be still be able to access. That's the official opinion that I received back.
So, but if it was housing, there would not necessarily...
Housing would likely not, single family homes would likely not generate enough increased traffic flow. That would warrant corrections on that.
So there is possibilities for being developed on that property that might sneak by a D. I mean, not obviously what we were looking for, but...
The other question is if we split that into residential homes, the cost per lot, how many lots do we get out of that versus the demo cost and everything?
I don't think you're even...
And I understand that, I'm just saying that. My primary concern tonight, from what I understand from John is, what do we do about a building that's an ISO and an hazard? It's been that way for over two years. And I think regardless of when we see that site in future, we as a city need to do something to plan it or to capitalize.
I think a good example would be thinking of like the Cannon. Now granted, that was something different, but that same type of, that parcel, that building became very problematic for us. And so getting that out of there and solve that problem. And then later was able to get cleaned up and something put into it. The situation might be something different to what we're going to do because of this Dow situation.
So I would, my recommendation would be to have city staff and especially the attorney draft a letter to the owner suggesting they sweep clean up on their behalf and turn them over. And if they're not willing to work with us, we'll do something, blah, blah, blah.
On the agenda, it says that this is just discussion, but if we give you a consensus of something along those lines that Diane just said, that's, that's all you need from us tonight?
For me, it's, I think I have enough of engage the owner and know that I have the backing of the council that some level of action is going to be taken if the response is no or, or the response is I...
Or there's no response?
No response, exactly. No response or the answer is, is no. So that's, that's the key element that I'm, came, you know, wanted to bring this to your attention. Because I don't want to, you know, I don't want to instigate a conversation and then, you know, have the backing to comfort or not have backing of the council when, you know, action doesn't happen.
And being commercial involvement at this point with the problem of MidDOT, we're not going to get somebody else at QuickTrip or some similar business to come in, tear it down because they can't.
Not until the, not until we get through our conversation with MidDOT. And that's, and that, that's a whole nother, whole nother element and something that I would still like the support of the council at some, some point to, you know, we want to figure out a solution. Go through the channels, proper channels, there are different grants and things that are available that would help expediate the process. The current funding pools that, and what we addressed or what I explained to you. The current funding pool is available in District Six for MidDOT. Those funds aren't available to them until 2029. Things that we could use, that the city could help apply for, that they could take input towards this project. Now, we could try to do something like a bond, well, you can't bond for transportation, but you could try to get, increase an allocation for a specific project related to transportation. But you need some really strong advocates for it and really good justification for how it's going to be a state benefit, not just a local benefit.
It's going to get closer. So if we can get them boarded up, that would be the letter, getting it closed. And I can see there being structural fires, what they can't up there at the electricity or whatever that's turned on. It just seems like it's going to come real quick.
What's your plan in case?
Yeah. I think leaning towards 10 or 15.
Anything else from the council or from John? All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we're on the one. Jeff? All right. Bill?
Not so much additional, but thank you.
Thanks for being here. Izzy? Laura?
Yep, we covered it too.
Wonderful. Chief? I just want to pick the council for discussion and version for John. Sarah?
We do want to...
All right.
Um, there is going to be a referendum, the election on November 4th. And that is ran by the school. And there are laws out there that say the school actually has to hold the referendum here because we have the jurisdiction or whatever. So we will be holding the referendum here. We'll have to change the council meeting, though we can do that at a later date, I think, John. We'll, we'll talk about that, but I know there's track stuff that has to be there for that. But, um, I also, we're going to work with the school. We, the school had asked us if they, to do their absentee voting. Instead of holding absentee voting, which begins September 19th, instead of having it at the school, they would like it here as well. So there is two staff members from the school that will be moving into the motor vehicle office. And they will be holding their absentee voting there. And we, city staff, myself, Michelle and Ellen, we are election judges as well. So we can help them and assist them if something should happen, they're short staffed or whatever. It just makes it easier all around that we don't have to go up there, help them, it's all right here. So they are moving two offices here, they're going to work out a motor vehicle. And this is where all of the voting will be happening from September 19th to November 4th. And then the election will be in council chambers from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you, Sarah. John?
Yes, so just to reiterate the council meeting so that because of, right now, the schedule for approvals with track, it is possible that that first meeting in November is one of, would land as one of the final approval meetings. So I don't want to just forgo that like council has in the past years. I know this last year, 2024 general election, we had a council meeting. Just, just cancel that meeting and just run one in November. I think there would be, you know, it'd be beneficial for us to have a separate date. So just wanted to make sure if you do have feedback, either likely the Monday or Monday before or the Wednesday after, we just need to make sure we have enough notice for that. So probably moving it a day later. I know Wednesdays can tend to have some conflicts with other activities going on. But just wanted to get that input. If you can, make sure you email me or let me know if you know, know of or right now, if that meeting date or even moving it to the, you know, actually the following week doesn't work either because that's going to be veterans meeting on that day. So the following, those two, first two Tuesdays are not open. So keep that in mind as you, as you make those considerations. In fact, also, I'm considering dates. I sent out some possible dates for next week for a special budget meeting so that we can have a preliminary discussion about the preliminary levy. Just want to make sure, I got a few responses already, so I know that none of, you know, those dates, but specific times, potentially conflict. Preferably would want to do something during the day. I have gotten feedback from one of the council members on that. Family conflicts for that. So any time between 10 and 2 during the day. Any of those, just make sure you let me know. I need to kind of have that set so that we can get that posted. Give me two hours, that'd be great. If I only got one, I can, I'll make it happen.
All right. Chris?
I guess I got two things here or so. Library Board update. They did hire an assistant librarian. Did 69 applications. A lot. That person started today. That's pretty much library board stuff. They went through agreements policy too. And then just, I think I'm allowed to ask this, where are we at with the Fair Board and negotiation update? I guess I haven't seen anything on that.
Yep, so I, just last week, we had a near final draft, a couple pieces in there. I actually forwarded that to the police department because of like their input on ordinances and making sure that we have means in which we can enforce them. And we got some feedback from them on that. So there's a couple pieces we just want to add for clarity, but we're, we're getting to the, pretty close to the final stages.
And then final stages, both parties agree on it and then it comes to planning commission and the council?
Yep.
Bam!
Oh, I was just going to, um, just noise monitors, do we even have those?
The short answer would be no. We have one, but it's not calibrated one. It's overused. Previously, did you kind of just get some general numbers? But, you know, the, the existing ordinance is very technical. It makes it very hard to be compliant with the components that we need to want now. That's a short answer.
How many are seen?
MPCA, yeah. MPCA does have a means to, they, they have the, they're the arbitrator of noise. So I can reach out to them and determine if we can, what either the device is or if they would even be able to come down to test at that time. Because I have had experiences with noise complaints before and MPCAs response often is, well, you know, we can't, if the noise happened in the past, we can't verify whether it was too loud or not. So they also like to try to pass it along to locally to be more of the authority on it. Our ordinances do kind of refer back to MPCA regulations. So I will reach out to them.
And then, I was just inside. Planning Commission is meeting this coming Monday. Five public hearings are scheduled.
No.
More?
Yeah, there's five public hearings for track that are scheduled and then there's three, two more, two more. One IUP and one...
Okay, it'll be a really fun, exciting meeting with public hearings that I've always, but especially on the one for the proposed development. Paperwork is here in Town Hall and City Hall. It is open for everybody to review. It is fascinating reading. You know, make sure you bring a pillow and water. But I would encourage people to look at it. It does have, you know, the list, very specific of variances that developer would like to put on, on this property. And I think those are the things that, at least I feel are very important for us to deal with seriously. But to know what they are, what they're asking for, because once those are granted, it kind of goes with the plan. And so it would be us to make sure that we, we already found out that the 14 foot security fence, although the picture has, the white picket fence is all the way around the outside of the property. The, there are variance requests for variance of a 14 foot security fence beyond the property, I think.
That...
Which I know you said that they're going to, but those are the kind of things in that we need to look at closely to make sure that that doesn't get over.
Correct. All right. Lisa?
Did the Fairgrounds take out a permit for September 13th?
There was no permit for this event to be happening. But there was conversations about making us aware of the event and we did discuss it. At the time, we anticipated that the ordinance may be even to the point where it was ready for approval to that before that event could take place, but it is now.
And Hardwood Way, second phase?
What's the question?
The bid for the second, second phase for Hardwood State? What, do you have specific questions? I mean, the information that we had, we had eight bidders, I believe, for the project. Engineering estimate was 1.55 million. Lowest bidder came back in at 1.2, 1.123 million. So it came in well under, underestimated for, based on the engineering scope. So the way the project will work based on the previous plan is we do need to establish the lot prices that we're going to have on that site. And that revenue generated from the sale of those lots will help offset or help to pay for the next phase of the lot. And then once that, you know, you go through phase three, and you do the same thing for phase three, bid the project out, set the lot prices, sell the lots, and that generates the revenue for phase four. You sell the lots of phase four, that generates the revenue payback, the original loan made to the EDA from the city of 1.2 million. I think in terms of our opinion, I think we're very satisfied and excited for the contractor that was awarded the bid and in the cost at which the prices came in and where we can set the lot prices that they are still going to be in that window that's, that we've seen already. The lots are selling and homes are building. There is kind of that, that market window right now for that in our community. And hopefully that works to continue the success and we get more homes generated.
Anybody else? All right. Jeff?
Well, I wasn't putting that brain up, but you guys were talking about the noise and the thing. John said like two months ago that we were going to, like, we, he asked, like, I'm not trying to overstep the boundaries with letting them do this. And that's what they announced that they were going to do, the monster trucks. The monster trucks are not there with loud noise like the racetrack was. It's supposed to be a kids event. There's videos on YouTube and they, because it's kids, they always say you should have noise protection. It's young children around cars, doesn't matter where they are. If they're blowing smoke up, then they'll never get a permit again. So hopefully everything is what they say it is.
Thanks, Jeff. Were there any other EDA's meeting here on Thursday? I was just wondering if there are any other boards or committees that met in between that needed any reports? Did the joint powers trail work? Just wanted to make sure we had updates that, so we've got the public up to date on that. Just to let the council know, I will be absent the next council meeting. Just to let the council know, I will be absent the next council meeting. I'll be in Kansas City at work related to that. So Monday and Tuesday, able to get back around 1:00 o'clock that night. So apologies, but I will be absent. So we will adjourn and take motion. Lisa? Second one. Chris, all those in favor? Opposed, we're adjourned.